All right, this is the City of Merrill Common Council Meeting. It is Wednesday, August 14th, 2024, and we are in City Hall Council Chambers. It is 6:30. I'd like everybody to rise and just do a quick moment of silence in honor of Pete Locamon, longtime city employee passed away, and then have the invocation, please.
So why does the Merrill City Council have a prayer or an invocation before meetings? Why bother? Does it make any difference in what you do? Perhaps, perhaps you have an invocation, an invocation simply because you can. So we've had, just had an election, a free and a fair election. So what I say here and what you guys decide here will soon enough be forgotten. But let us never forget or never take for granted the freedom we enjoy in this United States of America to vote, to govern ourselves, and to openly pray to God, whatever we believe God looks like. Let us pray. Lord, you appeared to Solomon, the newly crowned king, one night in a dream, and you said to him, "Ask for whatever you want me to give you." And Solomon answered in part, "Give your servant a discerning heart to govern your people and to distinguish between right and wrong. May we do likewise." And I would also like to add that, to add prayers for Pete Locaman and his family and his friends and their loss. In Jesus's name, amen.
Thank you, Pastor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Clerk Anderson Wohl, please call a roll.
Mr. Andrew Kahler?
Here.
Mr. Michael Kahler?
Here.
Mr. Meyer?
Here.
Ms. Furmanek?
Here.
Mr. Lass?
Here.
Mr. Waits?
Here.
And Ms. Ridkowski?
Here.
Seven out of eight.
Thank you. Next, Clerk, will you please read Common Council meeting expectations?
The City of Merrill respects the role of our elected officials. Alderpersons and department heads are committed to working in collaboration to provide our citizens with the best decision-making for our city's future. This meeting is a formal event, and professional conduct is the expectation of all in attendance.
Thank you. Next is public comment. Fair?
How did you know?
A little birdie told me you were going to do that today.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. I am Cindy Christensen. I'm the Lincoln County Fair Association Administrator. And as you know, the 2024 Fair ended on Sunday, only three days ago, which feels like a lot longer. So I don't have any definite numbers or anything to share with you, but I do have a lot of positive things to share with you. Financially, I can't say at this point that I was profitable, but that's not the most important point right now. First, I'd like to thank my fellow Fair Board members for all their hard work and time. By Sunday, the Fair, we don't really like each other, but I do love them and the dedication they've shown. I was only a week and a half out from surgery, and they made it all much better and much easier for me, and it was wonderful to see the care that they gave me. I'd also like to express our most sincere thank you to the many Merrill departments and people. The police and fire departments, sheriff's department, the street department, the city administrator, I wish I could all name them all one at a time, but I'm afraid I'm probably already missing some. But the City of Merrill should be very proud, I know I am, to say Merrill is our hometown. The cooperation by the police, fire, street, utilities, et cetera, was so amazing, and not many towns can say that about their services. Most of the permanent stands were so cooperative, and a few even showed their appreciation towards the Fair Association with an unsolicited monetary donation, which was very much appreciated by the Fair Board. I'd like to say it was a perfect fair, but whoever thought we'd have to worry about cold in August? But there was also an incident that tried to dampen it a little bit more. Because of the damn social media, excuse me, but it does seem to cause more problems than good things, our police and sheriff departments really showed excellent presence at the fair with the least amount of panic. Yes, rumors flew, and people kept asking me, as well as others, what was going on and if we were safe, which I confidently replied, "Yes, our law enforcement is taking care of it, and we follow their direction." After a while, I have to confess, I started to say, "Don't worry, somebody just wants to take me out," and they said, "Oh, okay, no problem," and walked away. I know it's not, nothing to joke about, but I did feel perfectly fine with our police and sheriff's presence there. And we have discussed these things at our state and national conventions, and we know that we cannot make a plan for it, but just to follow the authorities' direction, so we did as asked, and we were fine. I'm very proud of the Lincoln County Fair and of the City of Merrill, and at the annual convention in January, we have already bragged about the cooperation and assistance that we received from our city and county departments. So thank you to all of those that gave so much help and cooperation to the Fair Association, because together we are making many great memories and supporting many community organizations that are doing their yearly fundraising at the fair. We also have unsurmountable support from many of the businesses in Merrill. Every year, we seem to get more and more, and we are very grateful. We're also very grateful for the many positive remarks we, and we are learning to ignore the negative, because we do this for the good of our youth and our community. And even though it may not always show it, we love what we do and who we do it for. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Clyde Nelson, 709 Cottage here in Merrill, and I am also on the Fair Board with Cindy and with Sue, and of course, one of your council members, Nathan. I do want to express the gratitude again that Cindy mentioned, the cooperation with all of the departments within the City of Merrill. It's, I've got friends on the Fair Board in other counties, and they can't believe the amount of cooperation that we have with the City of Merrill, and it makes it great. One of the things I wanted to talk about is, I know I've seen all of you at the fair, at least at one point in time, but as I walked through the parking lot, I took some pictures of license plates, okay, to let people know, it's just not the City of Merrill or Wasaw or Tomahawk people that come here. First license plate I took was of Tennessee. Next one was in Texas, Illinois, of course, Wisconsin, Illinois, Colorado, let's see, there's a couple more here, Minnesota, Texas again, Missouri, New York, Florida, Connecticut. So there are people that come from all over the United States to come to this fair. Whether they're visiting friends and family, it doesn't matter. They come at the time of the fair, which is important. Thank you.
Any further public comment? Last call for public comment. Hearing none, I'm going to ask the council to move the resolution to the front as the people that are just going to speak on this have a conflict and asked if we could move them up to the front without objection.
Which one are you looking at?
The resolution for the authorizing of the issuance.
Okay.
Hearing none. Emily?
Brian, are you on the line?
I am. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we can hear you great. So what we're trying to do with this resolution is to give the administrator and the finance director the authority to sign off on the award when we do the borrowing. We're asking to do this as kind of a tool to get us off of the schedule of being tied to the Tuesday of the council meeting date, which gives us a little more flexibility, and it allows us to work with our underwriter to get the city the best deal, and I'm sure Brian can speak to this a lot more eloquently than I can, but it's, it's a tool that we're trying to use to get the city a better deal on the borrowing. So do you want to take it from there, Brian?
Sure thing, thank you. I thought that was a fine summary, and I'll go into just a little more detail. When, when I was last at the council to present the overall finance plan, one of the issues we discussed was an issue of general obligation promissory notes that would largely fund the general fund projects from '23 and '24 adopted, adopted capital plan, and a minor amount of refinancing associated with TID 11 and the known anticipation of its coming due here in the not-too-distant future. At that time, I kind of broached the subject of what I'll call the, the method of sale, and by that I mean, you have some options when you're taking, you're financing out to the capital markets. Historically, you've used both of the things that I'll talk about. One of them, more recently, we've leveraged what I would call a competitive sale. And I will say that there was a memo to kind of support this and brief all of you, to give you a little insight, but then I'm mainly speaking from those points. So the competitive sale is, I would say, pretty customary for general obligation debt. There's some nuance to that, though, in that the city has been, to some degree, credit-challenged, which I'll get into, and so the competitive sale works very well for general obligation debt. That's a pledge of your full faith and credit, essentially you'll pay from any available source, as well as a pledge of your unlimited taxing authority, so very strong credit. A number of years ago, the city received a downgrade to its rating into what I'll call the triple B category. Triple A is at the top, then double A, then single A, then triple B. So for quite some time, the city was in the A category, and as we've really worked to what I'll call reverse the internal loans from the general fund to the various TIDS and recover those, that's been a point of emphasis from the rating agency perspective. It is uncommon to sell debt competitively with a triple B rating. In fact, oftentimes, we're told it's better to go non-rated than to get a rating. Having said all that, things have turned a number of different ways in the marketplace over time, but rather than go the competitive sale route and try to just, to some degree, read the tea leaves of the marketplace and decide whether we get a rating or go non-rated, the thought would be we take a different approach, which should, should have the benefit of being more efficient and help us engage more directly with investors who would be interested in buying the bonds. And the way you do that would be to go through a process to pre-select the purchaser, you'll often see it referred to as the underwriter. And so in this case, rather than put together the transaction and put it out to essentially bid, where on what would normally be a council meeting date, by a certain time, all bids are due and they must come in, and we essentially then review them and award to the lowest interest cost proposal, there's a specific metric we use for that, and nothing else, really. In this case, what we would do is go through a request for proposals process where we would seek to engage an underwriter before the sale of the obligations. So it does introduce some level of competition, because ultimately, we're going to show them what everything looks like, they can make their own assessment, and then essentially, they'll, they'll tell us what their fee would be all along the way. We're still by the city's side, helping to not only craft the request for proposals, but to get it in the hands of those that have the qualifications and requisite experience underwriting similar transactions in the state of Wisconsin, and essentially taking those, those bonds, those securities, and selling them to their investor customers. They can help us evaluate the merits of whether to go non-rated or triple B with the rating. There are some other forms of, we'll call it credit enhancement, where essentially there are companies that you can buy insurance from, and they'll kind of wrap the whole transaction in an additional pledge, being, for whatever reason, if they're ever default, they would step in and make payment. Now, that, that part rarely ever happens, but just the promise of that brings with it lower interest costs, but it's not free, and we have to evaluate the economics of it. And so, again, engaging the underwriter in advance, we can have a direct dialogue with the interested party that is assisting us, and that ultimately would look to then sell the bond to their customers directly, rather than through the competitive environment. So all of this is, is within the framework of trying to get the best execution for the city. And so, to be efficient with time, and, and the understanding that elders would be working hand in glove with the city, we'd like to go through that process and select an underwriter, and then enjoy the benefit of the flexibility associated with that, which involves then also talking with the underwriter about when to access the market. And so, once the selection is made, we all kind of huddle up, talk about calendar, get some diligence taken care of on their part, and then effectively, we start to talk about marketing the debt to their investor customers. And it may be that, for whatever reason, market conditions, et cetera, that we all say, "I'm not so sure that, you know, September 10th is the best day to sell this debt." And so as a result, we want to leverage their expertise to some degree and try to find the best spot on the calendar. It may just be that that's the day, which would be great and convenient, but again, since we will have a pre-selected party, we want to use them to the greatest advantage and try to find the right spot on the calendar. There's also times where there are a lot of respective transactions from Wisconsin issuers, and then you're competing for eyeballs. Now, we look for that on competitive sales and may suggest that you move the day or even the time of the bids due. In this case, we can pivot a little more easily by working with the underwriter to say, you know, we don't, we don't want to compete with, you know, the, the six other issues on the calendar, let's set ourselves out by, say, selling on a Wednesday or a Thursday. And so the resolution essentially delegates some authority to select the underwriter, but then establishes certain parameters that, if satisfied, would, would allow the city administrator and the finance director to essentially sign a bond purchase agreement that would fix the rates and terms, much like is done when the council adopts the award resolution, when we have a competitive sale and the council meeting is later that evening. Again, we are a part of all of this as your advisor and are always looking out for your best interests. So maybe I'll pause there and see if there are specific questions that I can address. I recognize I'm, I've kind of thrown a lot at you, and this is mildly different from what we've done in the past. It's actually not that distinctly different from when we have solicited proposals from banks for direct purchase. We kind of go through a similar process, it's just that they're not looking to buy the debt and then sell it, they're looking to buy it for themselves. Again, generally, we try to target something closer to the council date to get those proposals in, but it's not dramatically different from that sort of context.
Any questions for Brian?
Brian, this is Alden and Furmanek. I have a question. Are you, um, just to clarify, are you putting an RFP out for an underwriter, or do you have a preferred underwriter already who will then put out RFPs for other buyers?
We want to go out and request proposals from underwriters. They'll give us some, some thoughts and feedback on the approach. We'll set out all the kind of facts and circumstances that I just described as to the why to go with a negotiated sale, and then we will get feedback from them on, here's what, here's what we think we will do. They will show us some indications of rates based upon certain options and help us get kind of dialed in. They will all be qualified and have the experience. The other thing they're going to tell us is, this is what we're going, going to charge for this engagement. And so we have a set of details that then we can introduce a level of both qualitative and quantitative, you know, details around selection. So history and experience matters. We've worked with all of these firms, so we can share those experiences with, with staff as we go through the selection process. We can choose to kind of engage with them more directly and ask some questions after the fact, but ultimately, we will have a set of details that will be informative and help us determine who to engage as we proceed. So yes, we, we will be asking for proposals. There is no party that has been kind of pre-selected for any reason, so we want to introduce some level of competition.
Any further discussion?
This is for one year, or this is a permanent?
One event.
This is specific to this transaction. We haven't put a sunset on it, but the full intent is walking away from this meeting, we have a, a request for proposals document pretty well teed up, put final touches on it, get it out to interested parties, and tell them that the intent is to try to price the, the notes on or around your council meeting date. If we could hit that date, and there's no reason not to, that would be great, and then we could come to you that evening and show you the results. If that's not advisable, we will find what we think is the most opportune day. You will be briefed on the outcome regardless. And so again, the parameters put kind of the guardrails around. The transaction cannot fall outside of these boundaries, so as long as we're within them, we can still execute. You will still know what's going to happen, and the objective is to get everything done and closed in September.
Is there a reason why we don't have an elected official listed on there also? Such as a mayor?
You certainly can. There's nothing inherently wrong with that. You could amend the resolution to include the mayor if you'd like. Ultimately, on the day of pricing, all the people need to be available, so that's okay. We can, we can include whomever you'd like. There is nothing inherently wrong with including an elected official, which could include the mayor, and all you would need to do is essentially amend the resolution to read that way.
Any further discussion? Hearing, hearing no more, Tom, will you synopsize the resolution?
This is a resolution which authorizes the issuance and establishes the parameters for the sale of not to exceed $3,350,000 general obligation promissory notes, excuse me, which would be Series 2024A. This, this, adopting this resolution would provide for the sale of notes which will pay for ultimately money borrowed for public purposes, including street improvements, park improvements, IT equipment, libraries, city hall building improvements, fairground improvements, tax increment district number 11 projects, including utilities and street reconstruction, and refunding a portion of the note anticipation note, Series 2022A, which was dated November 30th, 2022, which financed the project costs of TID number 11.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion?
I'd like to amend the resolution to include the mayor.
I'll second your amendment. Without objection.
We have an amendment to, and a second to include the mayor on signing off.
If I may, Brian, I assume you can take care of that as far as drafting that, or Corals and Brady can?
Indeed. Dom, I'll leave it to you, if you're comfortable with kind of the procedural aspects of making the amendment. I didn't want to speak out of turn there, so I certainly defer to you in that regard, but 100%, we can work behind the scenes to have the proper language inserted through, through this formal amendment process. That is, that is certainly something we can, we can knock out pretty quickly.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
So we have an amendment to the motion, and that amendment is to add the mayor as a signing party. All those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Do they have to make another motion?
Motion to approve the resolution as amended.
We have to have a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution as amended.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to approve the resolution as amended. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We'll go back to the regular, go ahead.
One point, before we move on and then we'll hang up, I'm wondering if maybe a roll call is more appropriate. I don't see any instructions here, but typically, these sorts of resolutions, if it didn't, if it wasn't specifically around the parameters, I think would be in a roll call fashion, but I am not the expert by any means.
If you're more comfortable with that, Brian, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll for Mr. Roll.
I, I don't see any downside.
No, there, there is no downside.
Right.
It's more work for her.
Clerk, please call the roll.
All right, Mr. Andrew Kahler?
Aye.
Mr. Michael Kahler?
Aye.
Mr. Meyer?
Aye.
Ms. Furmanek?
Aye.
Mr. Lass?
Aye.
Mr. Waits?
Aye.
Ms. Ridkowski?
Aye.
Seven passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we'll move on to the printed agenda. Minutes from the previous meeting.
Consider placing the minutes from the July 9th meeting on file.
Motion to place the minutes on file.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to place the July 9th meeting minutes on file. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have revenue and expense summary report.
Discuss and consider the July revenue and expense summary.
Are there any questions?
Why is everybody looking at me?
Because we know what's coming.
Could it be that I don't have any questions this time?
Would you like to make a motion to approve?
I will make a motion to approve.
Your Honor, I will second that motion.
I have a motion and a second to approve the revenue and expense summary report. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have general agenda items for consideration.
Consider the alcohol beverage license application for True North Energy LLC, 604 South Center Avenue, Merrill. This is being brought directly to the common council.
Your Honor, make a motion to approve the license application.
Oh, second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the liquor, beverage, light alcohol beverage license application for True North Energy LLC.
And this is a change in ownership, I assume?
Yes. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Committee of the whole, we didn't take any action, so that we won't need to reference that. Health and safety committee.
Consider a temporary picnic license for VFW Post 1638 to sell fermented malt beverages at the Merrill Fest, sorry, Merrill Fairgrounds by the grandstand and VFW area on August 17th, 2024, in conjunction with the Northern Wisconsin Dirt Track Racing NWDT event. The health and safety committee recommends approval.
I'll make a motion to accept the VFW sale of beverages at the fairgrounds.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to approve the temporary picnic license. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Consider a temporary picnic license for VFW Post 1638 to sell fermented malt beverages at the Merrill Fairgrounds on September 2nd, 2024, in conjunction with the Labor Day Car Show. The health and safety committee recommends approval.
I'll make a motion to accept the VFW selling of alcohol during the Labor Day Car Show at the fairgrounds.
I'll second.
On September 2nd.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is approved. Personnel and finance.
Discuss and consider the adoption of a City of Merrill investment policy. The personnel and finance committee forwarded this policy with their recommendation.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Before any motion is to be made, I had a long week last week, and I forgot kind of about this. Emily, would you remind us what this policy kind of is about?
Absolutely. So this is a policy to set up some guardrails and parameters on what the city can do with funds and how we invest funds and what we, the expectations are. And so what I took was a policy example from the WGF, it was Wisconsin Government Finance Officers Association, and then I looked at our ordinances and just sort of crafted a policy.
And then I looked at our ordinances and just sort of crafted a policy that fit, you know, the best case, the best practices from the GFOA, fit in our ordinances about what we say we can do with our funds. And it's just a policy to formalize, you know, what we do when we have funds available for investment. Like if we get our borrowing proceeds and we don't need to use those funds for three months, where should we put them so we're getting some return on our investment and making some money on those funds? What's an acceptable level of risk? What's the expectation? So that's really what this policy is doing. Are there any questions? Anything else I can answer?
No, kind of. That jogs my memory a lot better, so thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the policy.
And I will second that motion.
I have a motion and a second to approve the adoption of a City of Merrill investment policy. Any discussion?
Rod did just remind me that this is a finding that we've had in our audit the last couple of years, that we don't have a policy. So it's sort of plugging a gap that we have.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have placing the committee reports on file.
Consider placing the following reports on file. Airport Commission, Health and Safety, Historic Preservation, Library Board, Marketing and Communications, Parks and Recreation Commission, Personnel and Finance, and Transit Commission.
I'll make a motion to place the committee reports on file.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to place the committee reports on file. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now we have ordinances. Tom?
We have one ordinance for first reading. This is an ordinance amending Chapter 16, Section 16-1, 32-88B, Sub B, Sub 1, Street Sidewalks and Other Public Places. Section 16, Chapter, excuse me, Chapter 16, Section 16, 132-88B, one of the code of ordinance of the City of Merrill is amended to read as follows, and it would be permit boulevard fee from $35 to $65, permit gravel roadway fee from $125 to $65, permit roadway fee from $800 to $65. The ordinance continues to contain the standard severability and repeal ineffective clauses.
Your Honor, I have a question. What was the basis of these increases?
Rod?
I think it was during, what was it, the April meeting? We brought this forward as far as a correction to what we've been doing in the past. The $800 was a one-time fee, and it didn't take into account the area that we were patching. So right now, we are charging for the actual area that we fix. So it's almost encouraging street openings to stay as small as possible. And as far as the fees increased, I don't know how much time we spend on street openings, but it's quite a bit. It covers our costs, the $35. It mostly affects plumbers. A lot of the utilities, say, charger and public service, they're exempt from fees, so they don't pay a permit fee. So we felt that it was time to recoup some of our office costs as far as the $35 to $65, but we also did lower down the $800 and actually charging for what they used. So if, like I said, we're trying to encourage a smaller street opening as possible.
Main reason behind this question is my wife, as you may or may not know. With her elected position, she has a fee schedule, and one of the fees they charge is very small, and most of the time when she has to complete this task, she puts considerable work in there. So the fee currently is $75. It makes sense to go up to maybe $250, which some counties charge. Turns out, she can only raise fees a certain percentage. Are we bound by that same thing, that we can only raise a certain percentage?
We are not.
All right, it's all a question.
So changing the name of a business will cost more than a street upgrade, is what you're saying?
Street side-
Street opening.
Street opening? Okay.
That's for another day.
Hearing, well, we don't even have a motion.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I'd like to suspend the rules and give this ordinance its second and third reading by title only.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and give the ordinance its second and third reading by title only. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Tom?
For a second reading, this is an ordinance amending Chapter 16, Section 16-1, 32-88B, one, Street Sidewalks and Other Public Places. For a third reading, this is an ordinance amending Chapter 16, Section 16-1, 32-88B, Sub B, Sub 1, Street Sidewalks and Other Public Places.
Your Honor, make a motion to approve the ordinance?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Michael Kahler?
Aye.
Mr. Meyer?
Aye.
Ms. Furmanek?
Aye.
Mr. Lass?
No.
Mr. Wakes?
Aye.
Ms. Radkowski?
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Kahler?
Aye.
Six to one.
Thank you. We already did resolutions, and we have mayor's appointments.
Okay, do you want to do both at the same time or separate?
I don't think there's going to be a fight.
Okay, so you're going to do both. Teresa Baker will replace Rick Blake on the Transit Commission, starting September 1st, 2024, term to expire May 1st, 2027, and Alderperson Radkowski to replace Alderperson Meyer on the Marketing and Communications Committee, effective August 14th, 2024.
I'll make a motion to accept the changes on the Transit Commission and the Communications and Marketing Committee.
I'll second that.
Who seconded?
I have a motion and a second to approve the mayor's appointments. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have mayor's communications. Movie in the Park, the quilt show at the expo, and the fair were all a success. I want to thank everybody who participated. August 15th is a lunchtime concert at, it was at Banker Square, now at Polka Dot Pie, I believe, from 11 till 1:00. August 16th is a movie at the airport. Enter on the Champagne Street Gate, bring a chair and/or blanket. Soda, water, and popcorn will be offered for sale. August 18th, Trinity Block Party at the Mark. August 17th is the ATV/UTV races at the fairgrounds. August 20th is Community Night out at the fairgrounds near the Expo Center. Gazebo nights are every Thursday in August. Sounds like we might be moving tomorrow's to Lesson Gyms, is that correct?
Correct.
Due to weather?
Yes.
September 2nd, Labor Day Parade and Car Show at the fairgrounds. September 7th is the Citywide Garage Sale Day. September 12th through the 15th is the Fall Ride. Please be mindful of the extra traffic. September 13th and 14th is a gun show at the Expo Center. And just a reminder that school starts after Labor Day. Please watch for children and extra traffic in areas. This one kind of came about on Saturday when I was sitting, looking at my computer, that I want to remind everybody that I am generally available on Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays. If you'd like to stop in, call, or set up an appointment, I'll be happy to talk with you and meet with you in person. Rather than reading stuff on Facebook, I'd rather have it out in person. That's all I have. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.